I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Cody, would you give us a roll call, please?
Supervisor Milkie?
Here.
Clerk Cody here. Treasurer Rice?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Houck?
Here.
Trustee Thering?
Present.
And trustee Bills is excused.
Very good, thank you. Happy to entertain any motions regarding the agenda this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion by House, support by Cody. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion to pass the agenda as presented passes unanimously. That brings us to presentations. We do have Commissioner, County Commissioner Angler here tonight, so I told him he'd have an opportunity to come introduce himself.
I have to apologize. Hopefully I won't take you a long bunch of your time, but I am currently on my county commissioner for District Two and with District Eight. I will be moved to your district, so right now I have five townships, over 150 square miles of territory I cover. What makes it interesting is one of the, four of the townships have meetings on the same night, so on even a month I go to two, and on the odd months I go to two, and then one township actually has it, just so. I've had a lot of close calls, running into deer. I shouldn't say that, because I still got a year to go. I was just hoping to venture, just last night, so. Anyways, I thought I'd take this opportunity to introduce myself. Currently, this will be going on six years on the Board of Commissioners. I'm currently the chairman of the Criminal Justice County Affairs Committee. I'm on the Parks Board, Material Recycling Facility, Remontation Committee, and I'm on alternate on a couple others, but whenever you introduce yourself, you gotta give the history, so I'm gonna give it this one time, because I hate doing that, but it has to be done at least once. So I'll give a quick background, a little bit of my experiences. Probably the best way to find out what kind of commissioner I would be for you guys, if I were to get in there, is just talk to the townships that I currently represent. It will be a little bit of change, but just Deerfield, which I currently reside in, I'm actually a fourth generation farmer, farm starter there since 1880. Pretty well lived there my entire life, except for a short stint at school, but haven't moved around much, but we've been there a long time. Always, family's always stressed a lot of folks service, so still live farming yet. We farm probably about 1,100 acres, which is, I consider a more hobby farm, so I don't really consider them much, but it pretty well keeps me out of trouble, and you either, you either love it or you don't. If you don't love it, you shouldn't be in the business. I have four children, two girls, two boys, and another man that interested in fighting at this time and taking over the farm, and I'm opening up for grandkids, so I will keep my fingers crossed. I hate to see you be the last one to pass the farm on, but it's, the smaller farms are disappearing, and we could talk all day on that, but I won't do that. So I'll go right back into a little bit of my experiences, and you can try to see what kind of commissioner, where my specialties are. Went to Willsted High School, of course, 4-H, FFA, honor society, wrestling, football. Go to Willsted, you almost gotta play football, so that's kind of a given. Went to Michigan State University Agriculture Technologies, so came back, started farming. Some of my experiences about that time, I've been on the Isabelle County Conservation District, or on so on, and I think we were talking the other day, it's been over 25 years, but I've been, started out as chairman there, and I currently do vice chairman. I don't believe that you should ever be a permanent chairman on anything, it gets stale after a while. I'd like to see that. So went on that board, learned a lot about grants. We actually brought probably over $4 million to the county in different grants and programs. Of course, we do hazardous waste, tire recycling, electronic waste, along with a lot of rows of tree sales going on right now, so check the website out, it's one of our fundraisers we do on the tree sales. So I've also represented the conservation districts in both Argentin and Lansing before, so. Of course, being a farmer, farm broil, been the local president, I've been vice president, I've been on the state advisory board, the policy development board. I've also been their legislatively liaison to both Argentin and state. As you know, Stavina is chair of the agriculture committee, so I've actually been in her office a few times, so. A lot of the other states, when you have somebody, a chairman in your state, they talk to you a lot, so. Years ago, coming up through the farm broil system, I was nominated as their distinguished young farmer. I'm no longer young, I'm not sure how distinguished I was. I know I'm not young anymore, but anyways, I worked a lot with the farm broil. Brought me a lot of understanding legislative process, so. I've also served 18 years of Greenstone Farm Credit. Did start out that way. Started out at Farm Credit of Michigan's heartland, and when I was on the board, we went through two different mergers, where there was actually four farm credits, merged for better, it saved our customers probably 120 basis points, and the time I left, we were about the fourth largest in the United States. Through that, I got to learn quite a bit. I was also, that time started Bates Oxley was implemented, so we created an audit committee. I was on that initial audit committee, so. And also, I was also chairman of Greenstone at one time, so I dealt direct with auditors, so finances and auditing has always been, I don't know if you've ever been to one of my meetings, but that's always been one of my specialties, because Farm Credit system, actually, we went through four audits, so we have our own special auditors, all the type, so. Gave me a lot of understanding about audits and budget, and I'm gonna try to hurry this up as much as possible. Active in the church, I've served with the Board of Review for Deerfield Township, been on Isabelle canvassing board for a number of years, everyone for that, so learned about elections and everything. And with that, I will take questions. I don't want to take too much of your time, if you have any questions, any going out the board. Fairly proactive commissioners I will probably make, because there's only two of y'all, I'll try to make this about every, at least once a month, unless something comes up. Usually I have planting season and harvest, you have my skip out on one, but that's just the nature, so if you have any questions, I appreciate the time. I know these meetings can get long. If you need call, call me if anything, you're more welcome to do it, but anyways, I thought you ought to introduce me. I'll become a couple of your meetings and learn how you operate, try to get a feel, just in case I don't, I like to be prepared for everything, so. With that, I'll take any questions, and if not, I'll let you get back to your meeting.
I just want to say thanks for coming, and really appreciate you being here. You picked a good night, we have a light agenda tonight, so it's a short meeting.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I just want to say, I know Frank's done a lot for the Isabelle County Fair, too, the CoExpo over here. You forgot to mention that.
There's two things I'd like to say, but I'd like to say it's, I'd like to keep busy, so anyways, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, having no other presentations, we have no public hearings tonight, so that brings us to public comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. This is an opportunity for comments only. If you do choose to address the public and/or this board, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm not sure my item's on the agenda, but I'm Sky Dagel, and I live in Green Township, and I'm here as a representative from CIMBA, CM, MBAs, the Central Michigan Mountain biking Association. We are interested in the development of natural surface mountain bike trails with the city, the township, and also with the county, and to that end, Malcolm Fox has submitted an introductory proposal. We have a much larger proposal, we've actually hired a professional trail builder to help us develop some of this property, mostly centered around the Indian Pines. The proposal's forthcoming, actually, I have to admit, I don't know where it is, because Malcolm was supposed to be here tonight, and he just told me to try to pop in, just as an introduction, that we're serious about mountain biking. We also have a lot of labor resources, and we have some trail building expertise ourselves, and we're willing to volunteer and help move this process along. One important part is also, we have a lot of volunteers who help with the maintenance of these trails. Now, I know that's an important part, you can't just build a trail and hope it stays the same. The providers themselves are heavy participants in the maintenance of trails, not just here, but around the whole region where we live. So the proposal's be forthcoming, and I know we'll be asking for funding, not from, just from this board, from other sources, too. So if you guys have any questions, CIMBA is a contact, and Malcolm and I might be attending meetings in the future when it's more pertinent in our business.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public? There we go. Welcome.
Good evening. Ben Gunning, 2270 East Brew Hill Road. Two items. First of all, hopefully tonight you will address the planning commission, opening at least one of them. You have a nice list of candidates, you've got some fresh faces, which I think is fabulous, to get other people involved. With Alex leaving, and his, and also Mike, who are both project managers, you've got one gentleman on there that has project management experience, and so bringing that to the board is, I think, gonna be really important, and hopefully we'll see his name. Secondly, seeing on the agenda was the second reading of the extraction ordinance. Out of curiosity, I just kind of went back, and I think this is something probably that none of you know, and so I went through, back to November, excuse me, this October of 2020, and added up the legal bills that were the result of the ordinance. And just to let you know, with the Concerned Citizens suit up through 1231, was $45,090.87. With Zalid suit, $26,478.40. And I guess what really bothers me is, going through the agendas, I found a letter dated March 23 of 2020, addressed to the board. I'll start partway through. We could go on and on about the other aspects of this ordinance that are ill-advised, illegal, or just plain unnecessary. The bottom line here is that rather than look for a tailored ordinance that rationally regulates conduct, which could be a lawful nuisance, this ordinance was clearly designed by the authors to essentially shut the door to the extractive industry. If it is adopted, it will be challenged and will be largely eviscerated, as most any judge will see, that is adopted for just that purpose, shuttering any business that participates in this activity. We are not saying that further regulatory effort is unnecessary, or that the opinions of a vocal few should be disregarded. What we are saying is that the current proposal is a vast overreaction to legitimate concern that could be better addressed through cooperative dialogue, rather than fostering and facilitating an us versus them mentality. We can all peacefully coexist if we can give this some time and effort. From our perspective, we would be happy to appoint a small committee of owners/operators to meet in public committees with township representatives, to see if some of the concerns voiced can be addressed by a less drastic measure than the currently proposed ordinance. In closing, we want to work with you, and not against you, or any other member of the affected public. However, we can tell you that we also stand ready to enforce our rights in court, and in the event that we cannot find a reasonable, rational pathway forward, we certainly hope that does not become necessary. Long story short, both trustee and Houck pushed for that dialogue, to try to avoid this suit. The board voted another way, or decided to go a different direction, and looking at their requests, and what the current ordinance has been revised to, it looks pretty much like they got their way. So in the future, I hope that we decide to take dialogue, okay, instead of shooting votes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just making sure no one else wants to step up. All right, seeing no one coming forward, we'll close public comment at 7:16. That brings us to reports, boards, comments. We do have a number of applicants for the planning commission, but as indicated, we'll wait on those, so I understand it, we got one today. I haven't had a chance to reach out to that person, and I talked to, I believe, everybody else, and then my understanding is we may have one or two more still coming as well. We do have EDA openings of two. We have one applicant at this point. My understanding is there's more coming, but at this point, the seat is open. So I'll leave it at that. If someone's inclined, that they want to move on something.
I think I have another applicant for EDA I have to call in tomorrow.
Is this the one from one of the members that I talked to the other day?
Yeah, probably.
All right.
Maybe I don't know.
Okay, we'll talk later.
Does he own a business?
No.
Oh, goodness, not.
Oh, the applicant, yes, right on Remus. Oh, we've got two. Anyways, am I seeing anybody coming forward? Not this time. So we'll move on to board member reports. We'll start with trustee Brown.
I have no report.
Trustee Thering?
We meet next week, so I have something for you at the next meeting.
Fantastic. Treasurer Rice?
Taxes are coming due, guys. The 14th, so if you haven't already got them in the mail, I suggest dropping them off, or doing it online, just because we cannot honor postmark, so don't rely on the mail to get them here on time. Get them here yourself, or pay online. That's all I have about that, so.
Trustee Houck?
I'm at a road commission meeting on the 27th. They approved their audit for 2021. They ordered their second batch of road salt for roads. They're doing some patching and cutting dead trees along the side of the road. One of the most interesting things they talked about again was electric vehicles. In 2021, I'm not sure who they said figured this, but $2.1 billion was lost in road tax from fuel to electric vehicles in the state of Michigan alone. So, pretty significant. That's it, I don't have. They hired on some new drivers and a mechanic, and they're working, they're working out good, so. Other than that, I didn't have anything else.
I did notice the salt trucks showing up this week and making deliveries, so. That goes with your comment about them getting the second order in.
My problem is I can't read half my writing. I need to start typing, I guess.
Clerk Cody?
We had an election commission meeting to, we needed to approve document to submit to the county to request precincts three and one be merged together to save on costs for the may election, for the school election coming up, and we did get reimbursed for the November school election that just came in a couple weeks ago, I think. That is all.
Was it the school one, or the 911?
The school one. That was November, it was the school village.
We were also reimbursed for the 911. That's why I was thinking that for some reason, but, okay.
Yeah.
I don't have a lot to report. I will mention, I was meeting with the mayor of the city, sharing priorities that we had set as a board together, and listening to the mayor and the priorities the city has, and one of the things that we had in common, and I'm not sure how this lines up yet, but we had expressed as a board the desire to look at more sustainable energy consumption, both from economic as well as environmental impact, and what that means, we don't really know yet, right? But we put in money for, in the budget to better understand how we can be more efficient in this township. And so I had shared that with the mayor, and the mayor indicated that that was a priority in the city as well, and then through some other journeys, I talked to the chair of the Citizens Climate Lobby in town, a very active group, they They lobby for legislative changes related to climate change, and trying to help companies, organizations find ways to be more efficient with their energy consumption, and finding alternative energy sources. With that, conversation then with the chair of the county commission, Tobin Hope. I had talked to the outgoing chair, Mr. Horton, excuse me, and had wished him well and thanked him for his service, and then had a conversation with Tobin Hope, the new chair. I needed to express that there's some similar desires from the county commission perspective, priorities, to look at some potential cost savings and being a better steward of the environment. And so what that ended up resulting in was we'll be having a meeting in the near future with the tribe, CMU, the city, the county, and township, just to begin to have conversations. And I don't know what to expect, where this will go, other than the thought was that we all have similar goals. Is there some way that we can be stronger together in whatever we're trying to achieve? And I've been really clear that we don't know where we're going yet, other than we've identified it as a priority through our budget process, right? And so Mark and I will be attending that in the near future. My anticipation, clerk Cody, is that this will come up then at our intergovernmental committee meeting that's coming up as well, so I'll make sure that you're in the loop on the initial conversation. I just don't know what to expect yet. But I'm excited to have the conversation. I do know one of the things the city has been in partnership with is, with CMU, if you've not heard, is waste recycling, food waste recycling. So they've worked with CMU. They have a new engineering program in, it's in the engineering school, and I can't remember the name of the program, but it has to do with sustainability. And so they partner with CMU. CMU's going to be providing waste, food waste recycling for CMU to provide energy for the city. I thought that was pretty cool. And so the parties that were involved with CMU in that project are the ones that will be at this next meeting. So we'll see. Maybe they can be helpful to us, I don't know. That's all I have. So with that, happy to move to consent agenda, any motions I would entertain?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion by Rice, support by Brown. Who had warrants, by chance? Everything good?
Yep.
Any discussion or questions? Motion to approve consent agenda as presented. Hearing no objection for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion to pass consent agenda as presented is unanimously approved. That brings us to new business. We have a second reading for the proposed extraction ordinance 2202. We did have the first reading at our last meeting, I believe it was. We all had the opportunity to look at all the language changes. And with that, we'll open up the second reading. Mark, do you have any information you'd like to add?
Just briefly, the memo before you in your packet that begins on page 28 talks about conducting a second reading and to adopt the extraction ordinance. And the administration at this time is asking that you limit your considerations to just conducting the second reading, not the adoption. Not quite ready for that, as it turned out, thought we might be. So if you could just consider your second reading, then it'll be brought back for you, brought back in front of you at a later date for adoption. Thank you.
Any comments?
I'll make a motion to conduct the second reading, consideration for adoption of the proposed extraction ordinance.
Just motion to hold the same. Don't do the rest.
Oh, okay, yeah. I'll make a motion to, okay, yeah, you understand. I'll make a motion to conduct the second reading of the extraction ordinance.
Support.
And just for clarification, that's extraction ordinance 2202, correct? Okay. Discussion on the motion to conduct a second reading of extraction ordinance 2202? I'm in the same place I was when we did the first reading. I liked some of the changes that were in there. I don't have anything else to add.
Are there more changes coming, or something, or is it, or?
We are continuing our discussions with the other parties. I don't anticipate any more, but we still need signatures on certain documents that aren't, have not been obtained yet.
Any further comments? Motion is to conduct the second reading of extraction ordinance 2202. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion to conduct the second reading of extraction ordinance 2202 passes unanimously. That brings us to item B, 11B on our agenda, Poverty Exemption Guidelines Resolution. That's in your packet. And manager, would you like to introduce us at all?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of comments. In the past, the Board of Trustees has considered a resolution on an annual basis that defines the guidelines that the board review is to use when considering applications for poverty exemptions related to real estate taxes, property taxes. And as part of that, a couple of things go on. One, we have to follow the federal poverty guidelines, which are outlined in your packet. This agenda item begins on page 68 of your packet. And then there's also an asset, an asset test that has to be met. In the past, we brought these before you on an annual basis. Upon further review, we have determined that we don't need to bring this to you annually. We just need to bring it to you once, and then unless there's changes, then we would bring it back to you. So I say that because some of you might be used to seeing it every year. This time, this will be the last time you see it annually, unless there are changes. As part of the resolution, for instance, on page 71, there is not in the resolution the specific poverty guidelines per the number of households, because those are set annually. So in the resolution, that is blank. In your memo, the 22 poverty guidelines are listed here. So I think the biggest change for those that have been on the board is that you won't be seeing this every year moving forward, unless there's changes. For those that are a little newer, there is allowance in the general property tax act for exemptions to having to pay property taxes. There are some rules that govern that. One is creating guidelines that the Board of Trustees sets that instructs the board to review to follow these guidelines. So that's what you're doing tonight, is establishing guidelines for the board review to follow. Dad would be happy to answer any questions.
So what we've done in the past, then, actually listed the actual incomes rather than listing set annually by the STTC bulletin, is that accurate?
Yes.
That's why.
In the resolution itself. And by rule, we have to set those, we have to follow those federal property guidelines, and those are set annually by the Fed and then adopted by the State Tax Commission.
And so I'm assuming then the ones that this board adopted last year would no longer be in effect for the board review in March, correct?
Correct.
Meaning by not passing this, we would be leaving that. This is not an option for our residents.
Right.
Right. Happy to entertain motions or questions for our manager?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Poverty Exemption Guidelines Resolution to be used by the board of review when considering property tax exemption requests.
Support.
Trustee Thering, support by Halk. Further discussion? Any comments? Getting shakes of the head, so. With that, clerk Cody, would you give us a roll call vote on the motion to approve the Poverty Exemption Guidelines Resolution in front of us?
Supervisor Milkie?
Aye.
Treasure Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Howk?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. Six yeses.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that roll call. That brings us up to item 11C on our agenda, Policy Governance 2.5, Financial Condition and Activities. Manager, would you like to give us a run-through on this?
Yes, thank you. The memo and data for this item begins on page 73 of your agenda item. For those that track things pretty closely, normally governance policy items are on board agendas at the second meeting of the month. This one was missed in January, so it's being brought forward at your first meeting in February. The policy wording is, at its highest level, states that with respect to actual and ongoing financial condition and activities, the township management team shall not cause or allow the development of fiscal jeopardy or material deviation of actual expenditures from board priorities established in your N's policies. And then it goes on, there are about 10 subpolicies that speak to things like how to handle cash flow, what fund balances ought to be, that payroll and debts be settled in a timely manner. There's a whole list of them here. The manager interprets this policy to indicate a couple of things. One, that expenditures should not be incurred that exceed the approved budget for the current year unless it's some sort of emergency, life or death type of situation. There is also an exception to expenditure limits that are outlined in policy 2.5.6, which has to do with, what to do with emergencies. And there's also limitations within this policy and that are part of the interpretation that says if there are, that no expenditure greater than $10,000 is to be made without board approval. And that if there are board purchases, or if there are purchases that are over $5,000, that the board is to be notified unless they're part of the typical daily operations of the organization. And that also in interpreting this policy, that the tax payments that we receive in as an agent capacity for the other taxing units are to be distributed within two weeks of receipt of those funds. And that is to make sure that the money we're collecting on behalf of the school districts or the county, that we're not just holding on to those and making, earning interest income, that kind of thing, that they are to be dispersed as quickly as possible back to the taxing units. And that all accounts payable invoices are processed and ready for board approval as soon as they've been received, verified, and properly approved. So this policy that is 10 subsections long, my interpretation is that this is why and how we're to implement this policy. I feel that that's a reasonable justification, and it allows for the administration to do what we're supposed to do, which is kind of operate things on a day-to-day basis, leaving the board to operate at a level of policymaking. There's been attached to this report, the budget to actual expenditure report through year-end. I will note that we're still making postings to 2021, which is normal. We're just six weeks into the new fiscal year. We're still receiving invoices and effectively incurring expenses that we accrue back to 2021. So these numbers can change, but as it at least relates to the general fund, we're anticipating a positive variance of about a half a million dollars that would be in addition to fund balance when you compare that to the budget. So year-end 2021, we're going to have some positive variance, which is much better than having negative variances. There were no debts, no new debt incurred during the fourth quarter. We amended the budget in November of 2021. Part of the policy talks about making sure that expenditures don't exceed budgeted amounts. So whether it's a revenue issue or an expenditure, we amend the budget in a timely manner. We did that twice last year, actually more than twice. So we're amending the budget as new information comes forward, because the budget is a planning document when it's adopted at the beginning of the fiscal year. All payroll taxes and benefits were paid on time. All tax collections in the quarter were dispersed per those timelines that are outlined in state statute. We did have some financial information that needed to be submitted to the state to receive certain portions of revenue sharing. Those were to be submitted by December 1st. Those were made timely. We've received those payments. There were no emergency purchases made in the fourth quarter of 2021. So based on the data presented, I feel that the administration, the management team is in compliance with the policy. Dad would be happy to answer any questions, any of you may have.
High-level question for you. I don't know that I've ever thought this before, but you mentioned accruals. So we use an accrual economy method, not cash, correct? I was thinking of cash.
It's a modified accrual, which is a combination of cash and accrual, and it sort of depends on which fund we're talking about. The enterprise funds are full accrual. The general fund is modified.
In general, it's cash, right?
In general, it's cash.
That's what I thought. That's why when you said accrual, I was asking, or curious about that.
But if, and Sherry will correct me if I'm wrong, certain revenues, if we receive them within the first 60 days of the new fiscal year, and as appropriate, we'll hook those back to 2021 if they're received in that time period. So that's kind of the modified accrual business.
That helps.
The budget, that's basically cash. You know, we're assuming that all those revenues are going to come in in 2021 as cash, and that they're available for expenditures that year. If we receive an invoice for services that were actually provided in 2021, but we get that invoice in March. that invoice in March, we're going to have to book that to 2022 because of certain accounting rules, I believe. Because at some point, you can't keep booking back to the prior year because you got to close it at some point. So.
And by then, we're probably.
I'm an accountant, and so if anything I've said, if I'm discolored, please correct me.
No, it's correct. Like, a good example is revenue sharing. If you receive from the state, we receive about $180,000 end of February. And because it's within the first 60 days, and that payment is actually for sales tax collected by the state in November and December of 2021. So we take that amount once we get it, and we book it back to '21 because it's really for sales tax receipts in '21.
And it's put in the budget to be anticipated as November, December income.
So that's just a, that's an example of one thing that we.
Right. And that makes all, that all makes good sense. So, thank you. Just when you said accrual, I thought, I thought we were always cash basis. But there are, there's wiggle room there based on certain accounting rules, and that's helpful to know.
And they refer that as modified accrual.
Right, okay. Thanks. Any other questions?
One thing I just want to compliment everybody on this board is when I look at, like, meeting pay, we were over budgeted by four, by $650. And that just says, what that says is we're going to the meetings that we're supposed to go to. You know? I mean, we budgeted $4,000, but it was $46.50. So that just says, you know, that if you're assigned to go to meetings, you're going to them. So I think that's good.
And no evidence of any kind of abuse or anything of that either, right? All right, if there's no other comments, the only first thing I'll note is, report technically was due at the end of January, right? I'm wondering why it was in our pack at this time, but you were absent because of some PTO, well deserved. But with that, how did you feel the manager's interpretation was laid out?
Good.
Getting nods?
Good.
This is an important part of our policy governance. I mean, it speaks to really our top priority as trustees, right, as our fiduciary, that we're taking care of our taxpayers' money, making sure it's, we're good stewards. Is the interpretation justified? Is there proof provided to explain why the interpretation is reasonable?
Yes.
Oh, agree?
Agree.
I think I just kind of asked three and four together. Did the interpretation address all aspects of the policy?
Yes.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to boil down. How many sections of that? You said 10. It looks like 10. But they're all kind of related. So are we in compliance with the manager's interpretation of our policy?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely. Yep. Anything you worry about that's not clearly addressed? There's the opportunity to change our policy governance if we need it. Or any language changes? So with that, I'm interpreting for this board that everything looked good?
Good.
And they were okay with the policy as it exists today?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
All right. With that, we'll move on to extended public comment. Item 12 on the agenda, extended public comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. And with that, state your name and address for the record.
I'm calling 2270 East Springfield Road. That was a flash from the past, the meeting pay abuse. That's, it's been probably, what, eight years? And it's really just a shame that that had to be even put in policy governance, that people were actually pulling shenanigans like that. Secondly, you cost me five bucks because my wife got me that I said for sure that you were going to appoint at least one planning commissioner tonight. You didn't. So five bucks out of my pocket and in my wife's pocket. In final board comment, if you could, could you possibly express when you plan on filling those positions? I feel that particularly Commissioners Lovell and Buckley, who are incumbents, they expire on the 15th, which is the day of the meeting. So I don't know what kind of message that sends them. And I'm not sure why those, at least those two couldn't have been addressed if you're planning on reading this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mark Engler, 1798 West River Road. You already heard the speech, so I'm not going to talk about myself. But there's a couple of things that I would like to, I had to take the opportunity to do, and some of the other hats I have. So there will be a tire pickup recycling Saturday, June 25th and October 1st. That will be at the fairgrounds from 8:00 to 9:00. There will also be electronic waste pickup, same place, May 14th. Now, we've gotten money through the Conservation District for hazardous waste pickup. The company we dealt with is understaffed, so they haven't been able to give us a date. So we are checking for other companies that can do that because that has to be monitored by a licensed dealer. So to have the money for it, we're going to have it as soon as we get the date, we'll release that. One other thing, there was a committee formed a while ago. It's called the Septic Tank Reimbursement or Cost Share. I don't know if they changed their name. I hope they do. But it involved collaboration between the tribe, the Conservation District, Subterfuge Michigan Health Department, EGO. And they received the first application the other day. So that is moving forward. It's really not advertised, but you go through the health department to start the process, and goes through a committee, and there'll be 75% of the Septic Tank up to $15,000. So it's amazing how fast they figure out everything because the first one is right at 15, over $15,000. So it's amazing how, but anyways, that program, we do have our first one in that is up and running. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. On the electronic recycling, I just want to talk to you about something after the meeting.
Okay.
I want to ask you something about that, so.
Yes, yes. And if you ever need to ask anyone what's going on, I know Trustee Bills does a good job showing up at our meetings, but like I said, I plan on being a few of them, but I'll try not to be too long.
Can you just repeat the dates real quick for me?
Yes. For the electronic waste, it'll be Saturday, May 14th. And for the tire recycling, there will be two dates, Saturday, June 25th and October 1st. And like I said, we will be having hazardous waste pickup, but we just, until we can find a company in order, we're just waiting for that. So it'll probably be later in the fall, I would imagine, before it gets up in schedule. So.
And all those were at the county fairgrounds again, right?
Yep, 8:00 to 12:00. Usually, we try to have enough trucks, trucks, but especially on the tires. You think we've been doing this for so long? Well, once, like, three or four trucks are filled, and there are some restrictions as far as, you know, farm tires and mill rims and stuff like that. So, yes.
Is there a flyer for that, or is it posted anywhere?
It will be on the, I think it will be in the paper, and also it will be on the Isabelle Conservation District website, Facebook page. And like I said, usually when I go around, I try to announce some. But like I said, we keep thinking that it's going to slow down, but there seems to be, it's always full. We always have to try to get everybody in there, just as long as they don't throw them away. We've had them where they actually found tires the morning before, sitting there waiting for us. But anyways, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else coming forward, we'll close extended public comment at 7:50 PM. And with that, we'll move to item 13 on the agenda, the manager's comments. Mr. Stuldry, your hand.
Just a couple. Thank you. First, I appreciate the opportunity to, I've been on vacation last week. The acting township manager performed very well during that week. It was good to get away a little bit. Glad to be back. And then just as, so you can begin to think about what's coming up, we are planning on a presentation at your next meeting, the second meeting in February, where we'll have Mr. Nanny come and make a presentation during the presentation section of your agenda to give the board a little bit of background and a little bit more in-depth information as it relates to the economic development activities that have been going on in the township over the last year or more. And then what the township has done with the board's support to position us moving forward and try to explain and create an opportunity for questions as it relates to economic development in the community, in the township. And then in April, I'm not sure which meeting yet, but in April, you could anticipate another presentation by the Community Economic Development Director that will go into some detail as it relates to sidewalks and pathways. So you can begin to get an understanding of where we've been, what we've been doing the last couple of years, and what we're doing looking forward. So oftentimes, you get a very high-level description of what's going on, whether it's, whatever the program is, whether it's economic development or sidewalk. This will create an opportunity to hear at a bit more detailed level what's happening, and also an opportunity then for some dialogue, questions that you may have or they're coming up. So he'll be present to answer those during that time period as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to item 14, final board member comment. Let's see, I started with Trustee Brown on reports, so we'll start over on the right side, my right side, that is. Trustee Houck?
Well, I got a couple of things. I'd still like to see us look into policing grant that the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Maine came and talked to us. I think that probably is due in late June or first part of July. And last year, we didn't do anything with it. I think we have a demand from citizens. I know when I went out campaigning in 2020, that was one of the main things that people asked about. I was on Belmont Street, and a police officer came by, and the resident I was talking to said, wow, I haven't seen a cop car go down this street in years. So I think that's one thing that I'd like to see us get a little better policing. If we can afford to work with them on a grant, then I think we should pursue it. But we can't wait until June to do it. So I don't know who has to get in touch with the Sheriff's Department. I mean, I'll call Mike again and see if he wants to come in or whatever, but I think we should do something with it. I know I talked about, you know, further information was if we can get something going. I said at last meeting, park on the south end. If we're going to do this park, then let's get going on it. I mean, we got three years left on this board. If we want to get something done with it, let's do it. Another thing I want, just, I want to beg the public, come to our meetings and sign up or apply for some of the boards. You know, there's, I realize that on the planning commission, we have quite a few applicants for that, but the EDA board, we're always suffering, zoning board of appeals, we're suffering. I mean, if people can volunteer their time, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Houck, Clerk Cody?
I wasn't going to comment, but I'll comment. I'll agree with Houck on the policing grant to look into that. Thanks.
Treasurer Rice?
Texas. Give a minute. That's it.
That's your mantra.
Hey, we're getting down to the wire.
Trustee Thering?
I would like to support Trustee Houck's comments on the policing grant and the park discussion. I think they're worthwhile discussions to have. Thanks.
Trustee Brown?
I'm all set. It's a night, great meeting. Thank you.
I'll just comment, you know, I just heard three board members provide support for at least having discussions regarding policing in our community. And what that means is, I don't know, but I think having three of us interested in that, we should at least have that discussion. Because what I'm not clear on is what does the data show? And, but I'm, you know, we should be having that discussion. So be thinking before our next meeting about what kind of information we feel we need. Obviously, one option that Trustee Houck alluded to was the grant that we looked briefly at last year with Sheriff Maine. What's involved in that? I think we need to prepare ourselves for what that discussion should look like. So if we can, I'm thinking out loud here, forgive me. I don't know what our agenda looks like at the next meeting. Do you happen to know how full that agenda's going to be?
Well, we know we're going to have one presentation and dialogue on economic development.
Maybe we can have a little bit of informal discussion, just to find out what we need to know, to be informed to make a decision.
Have him come back and talk again, too? Sheriff Maine, have him come back and talk again sometime?
Anything is better than just wondering.
Okay.
We had statistical data from here with the last meeting that he came to. And I mean, we all know that our township is consuming a lot of the resources, wasn't it? Wasn't it 40% of the calls? Does anybody remember?
Well, we should be because of our population, though.
Oh, I realize that. But we also should be supporting it, too. I mean, it seems like we're against it for some reason.
Okay, so let's, I don't know what that conversation looks like yet, but be thinking about it. If you have ideas beyond what we're hearing here, certainly share them so that we can best prepare for a productive conversation. Okay? I will comment. I was asked about, I stated at the December meeting, I think the last meeting as well, that we're doing planning commission nominations until, we needed to mostly be, on the, the two going off now, that are, technically, there's three retiring. I've spoken to two that have reapplied, and at the March meetings, first March meeting, would give us an opportunity to fill the seats before the next planning commission meeting where those members going off will be missed. And with that, oh, I do have one other thing. Township Focus. Did you get your magazines? Did you read this one?
I didn't.
I have to be honest, I haven't read it all yet either. I just got it, but I did glance through, and it's right on the cover. It's Township ARPA Funds. And so I did a speed read of it, and I'm going to do a deeper read into it. But I think it's worth reading. The highlight of it is, and having a conversation with our manager about it as well, is we were given a set of rules on how we could expend that money. And the final rules, and I hope I'm not misspeaking, feel free to correct me if you think I'm stepping in inaccurate territory, but the final rules are a lot more liberal or lenient as far as what we have opportunity to spend those ARPA funds on. So we have a lot more latitude. Is that a reasonable interpretation?
Fair statement.
So if you get a chance, because this is, this is a once-in-a-generation, once-in-a-lifetime kind of thing that we have an opportunity to help our community with, get a chance to read this and know, because it does list out, I read it enough, it does list out, here's all the different things you can spend it on. So, and with that, I'd be happy to entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
To park. Support.
Motion by Rice, support by Cody. Seeing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closing sign. Motion to adjourn passes unanimously.